Good afternoon, everybody. Through the July eighth committee of the whole. Like to begin by our land acknowledgement. The town of Hinton respectfully acknowledges that it is located on the First Peoples' traditional lands. We recognize this traditional territory to show respect and understanding to those who walk this land since time into war. Today, we uphold our ongoing responsibility to work together in the spirit of the intent of the treaties with all the First Peoples' and nations they call this place home. The town expresses gratitude for the opportunity to build a better community from these sacred lands for generations to come. And with that, I'd like to call this meeting to order. First committee is the Adoption Agenda Committee. Is there any additions or deletions to this evening's agenda? Mayor Nissen?
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to seek consensus. The committee amend the agenda to include item eight point three mutual performance in closed session. If I can speak to it for a moment. Today is normally our mutual performance day, but as our C A O has been away, the agenda committee. I decided to push mutual performance to the end of the month for a regular. However, I have a couple of items that are of pressing importance that I need to discuss with council.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. All right, so I first look for amendment from committee. To add that to the agenda this evening. Uh, Councilor Doon?
I thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to seek consensus to amend the agenda for July eighth to include item eight point three mutual performance as per the mayor's recognition.
I'm sorry, one border from the chair. I thought I was activating.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm not chairing. You're not chairing. Thank you for that. It's not from the mid, so I appreciate that. So Mayor Nissen is making that motion to put eight point three. My apologies. My cold is still making my head cloudy, so. All right, we have then a consensus from Mayor Nissen. The committee amend the agenda to add item eight point three mutual performance. Any discussions? Seeing none, we'll call to question then, please vote now. That is carried unanimously. Thank you. Appreciate that. Fire me on that. Uh, committee, any other additions or deletions to this evening's agenda? Uh, administration, any additions or deletion?
No additions.
All right, so I've been looking then for someone to accept the agenda as amended. The council race.
Thank you, Chair. I would like to move to exactly the agenda as amended.
Thank you, Councilor Reese. Just give that a moment to come up. All right, and we have the motion that the committee adopt the agenda as amended. Or call that to question in the comments discussion. Seeing none, then we'll call that to question, please vote now. And that is carried unanimously. Thank you, everybody. As for the change to our procedure by law, we now have section three, community announcements. Ms. Secretary, is there any community announcements? None, okay, thank you. Uh, that'll move us to section four then, to our presentations. And with us, we have the Northern Rockies Museum, a part of the heritage to be presented by Margaret Schultz. So, Margaret, all yours.
Thank you, Chair. Um, as you said, my name's Margaret Schultz. I'm the manager of the Northern Rockies Museum, and I'm here in a capacity on behalf of the Hinton Historical Society to update you on the first half of 2025. I have Joe Melvin, my vice president, with me today. Can I make the slides change? Use the arrow. Oh, fine, yep.
You might need to click out of those pop-ups that are keeping in the corner.
Sounds like an idea. So, um, as we discussed in the past, we're here because council funds us and we want to keep you updated as to what we're doing. Where did we spot and a lot has gone on in the last six months. And just to start, our mandate is to collect and share local history, and everything we're doing is meant to tie back to that mandate. So, my presentation didn't make the pass through the portal of the email, so you'll just have to picture it saying winter highlights at the top. So this is the slide of the sold-out shows. One of the pictures shows one of the avalanche control presentations we had alongside our traveling avalanche exhibit. Uh, it was literally standing remotely. I was sitting on a windowsill at the time. It was really great to see people coming out for those special presentations. The February murder mystery in the middle was also sold-out success, and all of the participants had a really great time in this unique historically themed murder mystery. And by contrast, our axe throwing is a really relaxed event where the volunteers make my job easy and families come and go all afternoon. So those were our big events, but we also got some adult programming off the ground this winter. Uh, we had some very engaging presentations, some popular workshops that were also sold out, and our kind value programs, which continue to be more for me than for the seniors. But they keep coming and they keep talking to me, and it's always incredibly rewarding. These two slides really speak to the value of specific agency program because it would be quite difficult to keep the museum open year-round if we did not receive that funding. And so these really great local things in the winter are a result of that program. And then when we move into spring, we had kind of a nature theme going on. Uh, we relaunched our plants exhibit with gorgeous redesigned panels and pressed plant displays. Then by coincidence, we had booked a traveling exhibit of nature photography and were able to have the photographer come and give another presentation, which was very, very popular. Um, you see that stack of books in the picture? He sold them all. The audience absolutely loved them, and it was a really rewarding thing to make happen. At the same time, it was a noisy time. Uh, this is a very obvious highlight. The museum has a shiny new green roof. Thanks to this generous donation we received to get this roof, it means we've taken a really big step forward in protecting the museum and the artifacts that we maintain in the event of a wildfire. Then even while our roofer was doing his thing, we moved into our school program season. Once again, we're really grateful to the local teachers who choose to bring their classes to the museum. Um, it's a privilege to offer really innovative and professional field trips to our local students. With the added highlight that our summer student this year was able to offer programs in French, really took things up another level. And the teachers appreciate it. They've passed on some reviews for you. Uh, are these robust school program offerings we have are also benefit from civic agency support because it's the civic agency support that enables us to have a permanent staff. And that means the communications about programs are consistent, the delivery is consistent. We're able to update them to stay on top of curriculum. So it's a really great ongoing thing we're able to do because of our consistent operations. And consistent operations also is part of why we're doing really well with visitors this year. As you've talked about in the past, this number doesn't really do it justice because we work with every individual who comes in a different way. We might give someone a really long chatty tour or some concise travel tips. We might help them with their gift shopping or give them a meaningful volunteer opportunity. Um, everybody who comes here takes something away, and there's a broad ripple effect for every museum visitor. And they are very kind to us. Uh, we have four point seven stars in Google reviews. Oh, yes, you'd eat at our restaurant. And we, um, are grateful for how generous our visitors are. And that brings us to where we are now. We have a lot of plans this summer. One of the things that's helping me with that is that we have two summer students. Again, that's partially a result of our civic agency funding. Because I'm here full-time, I can write really strong student applications because those grant programs know that our students will be well-supervised and have a really well-organized experience. So we lucked out on the grants. We have, we were able to employ two local youth. They're taking the lead on projects and they're working together to run the museum on Saturdays, uh, which means I'm working Mondays and we will be open six days a week for the first time this summer. Um, my last word is that we're just really looking forward to serving all our visitors. We've been seeing a steady stream of locals and tourists since the summer holidays started, and it's exciting to see more. And so thank you for your time. I would love to hear your questions and comments on our year so far and our plans for the rest of it.
Excellent, thanks, Margaret. Uh, committee, any questions or comments for the museum? Councilor Doon?
Just with the other cap, thanks for the amazing programs. Teachers love them, teachers love them. So thank you, thank you, thank you.
Um, yeah, and for me, you know, there's a couple of things. One, I just want to thank that dedication of that roof, you know, that's something that, uh, is, you know, was not always expected, but it was an extremely generous donation. Um, also want to mention too, the two summer programs, it's nice because both, uh, summer students are from Hinton. Um, they, one that, um, burger shop that came back for the summer for her program down in Halifax. Uh, and she's back to offer her services and work at the museum. And then a younger person in high school?
Uh, he finished high school in 2024, but this is his first experience with a formal job. So it's a privilege to just, um, hopefully give him a really good work experience.
Absolutely.
Sometimes I feel like I'm dropping him off, but I don't think I spend that back.
Yeah, and he, uh, I think he did a lot of volunteer prior to this too, so he's no stranger to the library or to the museum, apologize. Uh, so that's really great to hear. And I also want to man, I get the pleasure of joining in on some of their board meetings in, in place of council chambers. And we've got some new people, uh, down there as well, you know, so we've got some new board members, so we're attracting, so that's great. Um, and the last thing I have is the council chambers that hand up there as well. Uh, it's sad, but I, I totally understand that Margaret was a huge part of our youth advisory, uh, committee, the, the administration side of things and brought a lot of valuable learnings to that group. So you are going to be missed, uh, as part of that group, and it's understandable, your duties at the lot, at the, uh, museum are, um, you know, there's a lot going on there, so it's going to balance that term, so. Um, but yeah, thank you. Councilor Chambers?
I thank you through the chair. A lot of, just echoing what everyone else says, it's been nice to get to know a little bit more about, um, the Historical Society for the meetings that I've been able to attend, and there's just a lot of really good chatter going on about the museum and the community right now. Um, the different school programs and different things that have been in multiple situations where people have just been talking about different events that they've been to or field trips they went on with their kids, things like that. So I think you guys are doing a great job and keep up, keep up the good work.
Just to add to the standing room only for the different presentations is amazing. Um, you know, uh, and, you know, I've already asked them if they could try not to do one Tuesdays because that seems to be the most popular night for everybody.
That was the avalanche.
But I know it was not. But no, I do, you know, it's great to see so many people coming out and supporting those programs, so. Okay, committee, any other questions or comments for our presentation?
I just made a quick little question. Uh, on Saturday night, Amelie, our, uh, summer student, is giving a concert. She's a harpist, and she'll be getting a concert at the Grace Church on Saturday evening starting at seven o'clock.
Excellent, thanks. Awesome, well, thank you for your presentation and thank you for coming and bringing that information to us, so.
Thank you for your time. We'll see you around. We'll be at Park's Day and at the Adam and, uh, Community Hall opening on July 19th, so you all better be at one of those. We'll catch you later.
Excellent.
Thank you for my support. Very much appreciated.
Thank you. Excellent, okay, committee, uh, we're going to move on to now reports for administration. Starting things off, we have the draft parks, sports field level of service. And I'm assuming Trent will then give that over to this lady.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you very much. This afternoon, the report before you, uh, is related to the first iteration of this policy that was brought way back in August of 2024. From that meeting, upon reviewing the draft, um, council directed some operating business cases that later became incorporated into the budget to increase the levels of services for, uh, playgrounds and sports fields specifically that fall within the policy. Within the analysis section, um, there's two bolded areas that highlight for you the specific additions, um, that mirror the work that we're doing through the operating business cases, um, and those have been added into this version of the policy. I can take any questions at this time. Thank you.
So, committee, any questions from this way in this level of service? Councilor Reese?
Thank you, Chair. So, um, driving around town, I spent time going to these playgrounds. How often do the, um, business staff get their to-do weaving and grass control?
Just scroll to that section. It is highlighted in there. I'm inclined to say bi-weekly, stand by. Section seven.
So every two weeks?
Correct. Uh, this year, of course, we had to, you may recall that we had to do some border work on a lot of the playgrounds, get some additional sand added in there because they've been neglected for a number of years. Um, so they're working through that process, and then they begin the work of every two weeks, mowing, whipping, weeding, raking, checking for hazards, et cetera. Yeah.
Have you had any complaints on the car though? That was one that I had went to and it seemed a little overthrown.
Thank you for that question, Councilor Reese. Nothing through our, uh, citywide system at this time. No complaints on that one.
Great, thank you.
Councilor Doon?
Um, I had, because I think it was like three weeks ago, I was having a hard time remembering when it was coming up. Um, the new, the new bleachers, uh, in Gordon Moore. Um, Jordan had mentioned they were slated for replacement this summer. Is the style, uh, and I think this was my understanding, they're going to be like that metal aluminum sort of design where it's, they're a little bit more robust than the old wooden ones. That was the, the plan, right?
Thank you for that question. That's correct. Um, we're doing the aluminum ones. Uh, some that are in decent condition this year, the wood will simply be replaced on them. Yeah. Um, with like an aluminum or vinyl wrap until such a time that we replace the whole thing. The community will notice that they're only four risers high, I believe, as opposed to six. And that's because now with new regulations, any higher than that, and they require like a cage around the back, which really increased the cost. Um, so we're just going to over time get more of the smaller ones.
Okay.
Yeah.
Awesome. Uh, no, I just, I appreciate the work that went into sort of stepping up the level of service and, yeah, we'll see how things go. It's, it's appreciated, so thank you.
Mayor Nissen? Thank you through the chair to, uh, Miss White. Uh, are the soccer fields at Mary Rhimer Park handled through this or are they handled otherwise?
Uh, thank you for that question. Soccer fields at Mary Rhimer Park are considered parks in partnership and are not included in our level of service. That's done through, uh, the soccer association themselves. Um, however, we have partnered on occasion for, let's say, a large tournament to support them in, in being successful with that, but the day-to-day regular maintenance is on the society or association.
Good call. But did the soccer fields at Mary Rhimer get sprayed for weeds this year?
Um, thank you for that question. You may recall, I'm not sure if you were here, admin did expand the scope of our weed spraying to assist, uh, minor soccer with spraying that area as well. However, due to timing, um, I believe that'll occur a little bit later in the season this year for, for soccer specifically.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, myself. First off, yeah, I've heard a lot, especially from the, the minor baseball, you know, the, the Gordon Moore. And just seeing that picture, uh, of the dugouts was, uh, yeah, that was shocking actually. So they look great. Um, you know, I, I do have a couple of questions because, I mean, we have that additional staff that we, you know, like, ongoing. So, you know, what, what does it look like ongoing to keep those areas with, if we were to go with extra staff for the next summers? Are we going to be able to keep up with it once we've got it, uh, more under control?
Thank you for the question. You will recall as part of the O B C, we actually purchased an additional mower to, for the, for the operator to use. So that staff member is at a move-up rate. So we will always now, as long as that mower is in existence, continue with this level of service unless otherwise directed by council. Um, the sports field specifically, though, that person will be dedicated to that space entirely, um, to keep it mowed at the, at the height they are looking for, weeded on a regular basis. We do pull them, um, away for, you know, other weeding in the park and things in that same park as a whole. Um, so no, it will be maintained with that extra person going forward. Yeah.
So, and I guess specifically, I was kind of looking at the shrubberies and all that, those areas, that too will be able to be maintained?
The shrubberies within Gordon Moore Park are over now into the rec center.
Into the rec center, where, yeah, those areas, yeah.
So, uh, the, the areas like garden beds, trees, and mowing for town buildings are included in the vegetation management level of service, which still needs to come before you. They are separate. This is just for our park and playground spaces as well as sports fields.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I just have one more question, then I see Councilor Chambers. Um, so one of the things I caught in the, in the report was during our, um, street sweeping, we kind of get a little behind because the equipment is universal, right? Uh, so they take the mower off, they put the sweeper on. Uh, you know, so I guess the question is administration at all looking at for future budgets to look at, uh, adding additional equipment so that we don't get behind in that, uh, in our, in our mowing and all those other things? Because I realized, you know, streets we've been taking that off of the, of a mower is, is a time-consuming, uh, matter. So is that at all anything administration is thinking about?
Thank you for that question through to the remainder of committee. Uh, we actually tried a different approach this year, and they did a bit of a leapfrog method, which allowed our mowers to kind of take off and go mow a bit until they were required back for sweeping. That seemed to work quite well, but it is really hard to tell because it's often based on how your growing season is going in that particular year. So it went well. We want to try that again next year, and if we continue to see challenges, we'll, we'll look at other solutions. Um, equipment being one of them, but then you need people to operate it, and that will always pull them off of our parks, so.
Oh, fair enough. Okay, thank you. Uh, Council Chambers?
I thank you through the chair. Just back to, um, Council Race's original pointable playgrounds. So there was a bit of a chain of conversation that was had, um, on social media, but I think it was the Bradwell Park. Um, and some pictures that were shown of, basically you almost have to mow the sand. There are so many weeds within that area. So is it fair to say that those parks that are in that shape, they are slated for more sand and further cleanup? Because I, as I went through this, I was looking for that as well. Like, what about weed removal within those sand areas, not just raking and looking for hazards? But is that a separate thing? Because they shouldn't have got to have looked like that in the first place? Um, and something that's still to be done this year? Or I did encourage them to, to put something through on hint and listens. I'm not sure if they have, but I just didn't see in here where it talks about specific weed removal within the sand areas. Um, and I just wondered if that was a separate kind of capital project or is that something that should be? Um, yeah, because it talks about Raycanton visually checked for sharps or health hazards bi-weekly during the summer months, but, and then it talks about adjacent grass, fence lines, um, along playground amenities and borders, but that area, some of it is really quite full of weeds and grass, looks quite bad.
Thank you for that question, Councilor Chambers. I believe I added that back in. If it's not there, it should be there. That is part of the scope that was in the, um, the O B C. Uh, specific to Bradwell, they likely just hadn't gotten to that one yet in terms of replacing all of, all of the sand. We were shooting for the first week of July, once the kids are at school, to at least have all of the sand refreshed and then kind of work our way through that. Um, I could follow up specifically on that part, but again, I've seen no complaints through our system on that one. Uh, so we must have gotten caught up, but yes, the weed pulling will always occur, um, quite heavily in, in the spring, um, through May, June, and then once school is out, you see that it, it doesn't grow as frequently through the sand, um, so then it'll go bi-weekly after that point. I'll do a double check to ensure it's in there, it was supposed to be.
Yeah, I don't see, I've got it pulled up here on my computer and I don't see it, but yeah, just as long as that's caught because it certainly's gotten away with us like other weeds, definitely in the town as they do this time of year. But yeah, just wanted to make sure that that's included in there.
Thank you, Council Chambers. I have Mayor Nissen, the Council Race, and then myself.
I thank you through the chair to administration. I have a question about memorial advertising benches, uh, listed in this policy. How, uh, I've heard from residents about the loss of benches on some of our trails down in the valley is the condition of the benches is degraded to a point where the benches have just been removed uh, and not replaced. And I was wondering, how do we handle the addition of memorial and advertising benches in our community?
Thank you for that question through to all of committee. That's actually outside the scope of Parks and Recreation. It's currently housed as a facility item, as an amenity, and that's actually through Infrastructure Services. I, what I can say is that our memorial benches, um, are replaced, uh, or are added upon request. Um, oftentimes, an individual may reach out seeking additional maintenance for that if budget allows. My understanding is that, um, uh, Ms. Arsenault will send a work request for parks to go in and address it. However, you will recall that when I brought this report originally, benches along the signage was one of the things that we, we can't accomplish right now with our staffing levels and current level of service. So we do no maintenance to those log benches once they are placed.
And how is the placement of new benches initiated? Is that from a community member that wants to purchase a memorial or advertising bench? Or is it administratively started and then, uh, donations or advertising sock?
Thank you for that. Any of the existing advertising benches, uh, those are replaced as the ad contracts expire. Um, if someone were to reach out and inquire about adding one, again, that would go through Ms. Arsenault's office. Um, with respect to memorial benches, those are, um, requested.
Thank you. Uh, Council Reese?
Thank you, Chair. So I'm not seeing it in the package, but is lighting ever seen as a level of service? You know, lighting at Mary Rhimer, lighting by the, the dog park, lighting in the playground areas, you know, as a safety concern?
Thank you for that question, Councilor Reese. Within the Parks Open Spaces Trails Master Plan, lighting for each park type, uh, or lighting for each park is determined by its type. Um, so when we build a new park or refurbish a park, we try to align it with the Parks Open Spaces Trails Master Plan. Um, in, in this case, if we had a pre-existing park and a light were to go out, of course, it is our, our level of surface to return the light to the same brightness, I suppose, that it was, um, before it went out. Um, but we wouldn't, we would only look at adding new lights similar to what we had done at Erith a number of years ago, uh, to, based on a request that came to council about being able to play hockey in the evening. So we added lights for that.
Let me give you a moment. So, um, a person's best bet would be to go on hint and listens or to contact you directly if they have lighting issues in any area?
Thank you for that question, Councilor Reese. In any area within, within a park or on trails? That's correct. Um, they could put it in through our hint and, hint and listens portal, and we'll assess it for safety and the like and get it replaced if it already exists. And if they'd like to see some lighting, we can look at, um, you know, what, what pieces we'll have to evaluate before making that possible.
Super. And just one more quick, quick, quick question. The promenade, you know, from the brick heading east, you know, down towards government. I've seen people walking that, and I'll tell you, they look like they're on their last leg, and if there was a bench there, that'd be certain. So kind of going with our mayor's question, how do we get a bench on a promenade at Erica?
Thank you, Council Race. I think if a community member wanted to see a bench in that area, they could put in the request through hint and listens. It would be filtered over to Infrastructure Services, and somebody from that department would reach out and assess which location, if it's, if it's feasible, essentially.
Because it could be me walking on that promenade. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Council Race, and myself. Um, and maybe this is more for budget, the conversation, but, you know, more and more we're hearing, you know, the weeds in, in the area of that, of the, of the playground itself and the sand and everything. And, uh, and we're well aware that, you know, putting down recycled tires and all those things that are, those mats and stuff are hugely expensive. So I guess my question though is, as I recall a couple of years ago, and, and, you know, we go through that trade fair at the Alberta Unis, and they have a whole bunch of stuff, but one of the things that stood out for me was, uh, there was a company that was selling, they were mats of hemp. And apparently they are, you're able to lay these mats down and it chokes out anything from growing through it. Um, you know, and it, it particularly was talked about grass areas, but I mean, you know, grass, weeds, whatever. So is there any, uh, attempt of looking at alternatives that still incorporate the sand or that, that, but could somehow choke out any vegetation coming through, uh, those areas? You know, because in my mind, a hunk of grass, that's huge, whereas a, as a playground is a fixed area. So is there any attempt to look at anything, alternatives to try to, to, uh, so we don't have, need the manpower to do those areas as much?
I think that, um, the most cost-effective option is actually to use the staff that we've allocated.
Okay.
And the reason for that Think that um the most cost effective option is actually to use the staff that we've allocated, and the reason for that being. Theoretically, they shouldn't be left that long to be in that kind of condition to require as much labor. Um so we're rectifying that now. Um but we did with the Bradwell Park, I believe, look at. Um not the the tire, um but like a composite wood that kind of sticks together and we're. So that's the first time we're going to try that one. So we did like a hybrid model on that park. Um which we're we're looking to see what that yields in terms of uh reducing maintenance requirements as well.
Okay, yeah, excellent.
All right, Council, good. Uh I'd like to take the recommended action and seek consensus that committee direct administration. To bring the draft parks and sports field level of service policies, D S seventy two oh five. To a future regular meeting of council for decision.
Thank you, Council. Good. Any speak to it?
No, just appreciated that admin has chewed on this and looked at increasing the level of service in a number of different areas. Uh it will be nice to see sort of over the next year, sort of how how the community feels about that, you know. Uh compared to to what we have in the past, so.
Okay, thank you. Uh so committee, we have uh direction, the committee. Direct administration to bring the draft parks and sports field level of service policy, C seven seventy two oh five to the future. Regular meeting with council for decision. Any comments or questions on the direction? Seeing none, then we'll call the question. Please vote. And that is carried unanimously. Thank you very much. Um I do have just a quick follow up question. Uh uh I believe, I'm assuming the mowing policy that's going to come later. Uh it was slated for this evening, but it's going to be coming later at a future agenda.
Thank you for that question. Um I had accidentally swapped working on them, so it is coming. It will be here probably towards the end of August.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. Council Race, you?
I have just a quick one. And so if you had citizens in town interested in thinking on an area and. A week, like cemetery or at the library. I don't know if you've had that request, but I know there are some municipalities where. The community takes ownership and takes care of that area. Would they get a hold of you or just go on hint and? Listens and um let them know where else and what area they would like to read?
Thanks, Council Race. I think the best practice is, of course, to send them through hint and listen so that we can track them, those numbers of requests, but also put. Um people in contact with each other who may be offering similar partnerships. Um and then we evaluate those kind of on a ad hoc basis. Based on the area that they're looking to do, the type of work, et cetera. Uh for example, we do partner each year with the schools to do a bit of a community cleanup. We provide some um. Some bags and and things like gloves. We also do kind of a work bee. Similarly, we volunteers and community members at the boardwalk each year. Uh so it is possible, uh but it it really depends on the scope.
So my issue is because we are union, you know, without the uh issue. You know, somebody doing the reading and taking that job away from somebody who was paid to do the reading.
That's why it's so important that they connect with us so that we can build an appropriate structure for getting that work done.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council Race. Uh committee, is there any other matters on five point one? Seeing none, we'll move on to five point two, uh reserve policy framework report and. I'll look at Mr. McLaughlin, but I'm assuming we're going over to Ms. Borbo. That's correct. Right, Ms. Borbo?
Thank you, committee. So the reserve uh policy and framework report for you this evening. Uh throughout the report and the policy, you see that we're proposing a bit of a structural change to the framework. Uh for holding of the reserves and we're looking for an indication of optimal thresholds to. Potentially work towards getting built up. And we're also looking for a mechanism for council to provide direction on the the funding allocations during budget. Rather than during audit time when it's um. Kind of chaotic and we're really working towards meeting our May first deadline of doing the reporting to municipal affairs. And so sometimes the information is uh not available to bring to council until after the first of May. Uh we also feel that throughout the policy and the framework suggested that uh. We're going to be increasing council's oversight on the reserves overall. Uh we're going to be increasing department knowledge and we're going to increase the organization's reliance on that. Single point of contact to be controlling or be the most knowledgeable on the reserves. Uh as you're seeing this for just the first time, our recommended action tonight is to. Gather your feedback and thoughts and bring it to a future committee of the whole meeting with any adjustments or rap. Other items that you would like to see included. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Borbo, uh committee. Uh Council Race.
Thank you. Could you go over restricted reserve and reserve the difference?
There isn't generally a really big difference, so we tend to classify them as. Restricted reserve and operating reserve. An operating reserve is. A smaller pool of money generally that is. Able to be accessed in the event of an emergency or without having to wait for a formal. Decision from council. Um. Your restricted reserves should always be done through the budget process. So that council is well aware of the projects that they are funding through reserves, as well as how the money is being funded into it. Uh reserves are not legislated through the Municipal Government Act. Uh Corporate Services Department takes great. Oils in ensuring that we handle the money according to generally accepted. Counting principles as well as do the public sector counting board requirements that we are. Uh but there is a lot of flexibility and latitude in. The rest of the makeup of handling of reserves, but spending expenditures from them. Um restricted reserves must always be done through a council motion.
Okay, is the rec center restricted or?
The the rec center reserve or the rec center construction reserve, I think is what the uh discussion earlier at one of the workshops. Is definitely a restricted reserve.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Council Race. Me? So if I may, um. I like the short policy, by the way, but I mean, ultimately, up to this point, we have never had policy on reserves. It was more through the budget and that what we're, what administration is um. Suggesting with this policy is to have a policy in place that we can directly follow. Um you know, as a council and for administration as well. Is that that really what I'm I'm getting from this?
Thank you for the question. So that's exactly what we're trying to do. Um I will admit openly every year as spring arrives and we're preparing the audit. We know in our hearts that we're going to be disappointing council because the invoices for funding of capital projects sometimes are slow to come in. And we are. Truly doing everything in our power to get all of the numbers tabulated and correctly categorized. And then it's the presentation from the auditor and then it's filing with municipal affairs. And at some point in there, we should have been before council expressing what we could do with the investment income or the. Uh any surplus that there is in the year. And our two choices are always bring that to report to council and file late with municipal affairs or. File correctly on time with municipal affairs and then have a little bit tougher conversation with council after the fact. So the framework that has been referred to in the policy would provide, and I. Lead it is on page thirty five of fifty four of your uh package. So the framework would be to allocate by strategic category. What council would like to fund the different categories? This. Sampling of what's on page thirty five would be uh from a financial perspective, a a good recommendation of a starting point. Going through this, it would be funding the asset management, funding the community. Funding our risk mitigation strategies, funding uh corporate support, so. The umbrella that overarches and and monies go throughout the entire organization. Also, under that corporate support, there will be a new line once the election happens, which will be the council professional development. That was a uh reserve that was determined. So in that instance, uh by May council or race, that would be. An example of an operating reserve, monies that are there. But they've already been allocated for a purpose and the ability to spend them has been written out through policy. So we can make those expenditures from that reserve. Uh the development is uh offsite levies. And down we have the external alliances and and this is uh. This is not new, but what has happened in the past is, for example, the mountain bike trail reserve. Has been intermingled with the parks and trail reserves. So when we're looking at the balance of one. It has been missed at times that not all of that money. Belongs to the Parks and Trails Recreation. There has been a portion allocated for the mountain bike trail, so. A framework such as this does it out a little bit easier. Council would make the determination at budget time at which percentage they would like each of the strategic categories funded by. And then when we do have investment income or a surplus that's identified through audit. We have our direction to fund on those percentage basis.
Okay, thank you. Council, good.
Yeah, I think just to build off of that, so. Let me, let me know if I'm interpreting it correctly. So with the framework. Um you know, budget time comes around or we have additional funds to invest. Is it essentially that that framework that's identified forty percent, seventeen percent, ten percent? Is the idea that for every dollar council designates to go into reserves? The breakup is like that, so forty cents on that dollar would be asset management, seventeen cents. Is that the the idea?
That is a hundred percent correct, Council.
I just, I I made that assumption when I was reading through the report. I just wanted to make sure. Uh you know, that's that's good. That helps me a lot.
And if I may, um going through a lot of audits, but um I think this was a recommendation from a lot of. Audits that we do have a policy in place, was it not? Uh because they typically make some some recommendations, obviously, uh through that. Am I correct in that or?
Uh through to all of committee, this was a um. Council action pending item when I came on in twenty twenty two. I uh I am going to presume that that came from the audit direction, but I I did not research that and. Determine anything different with any other certainty.
Right. If I recall, I'm interested in council, maybe not an exception of the mayor. I think it was one of our CEOs that also was struggling with that and needed a policy, and that was a strong recommendation there too, so. Um no, I I I appreciate it. I think that reserves is a very important part of our community and having some policy. Uh background reduce, I think, is extremely important. And I personally, I'm like the setup, so uh you know, uh so thank you. Uh Mayor, this and then Council.
Thank you through the chair to Ms. Borbo. I just want to make sure I'm fully and clearly understanding the the purpose of this. We call it a uh framework. So the framework listed on page thirty five with the forty percent asset management, seventy percent community, ten percent risk mitigation. Twenty seven percent corporate support, two percent strategic projects and four percent development. That would be how administration would automatically allocate. Any investment income that that comes in, so you wouldn't need a motion of council in the spring to deal with that investment income. That's correct?
Uh through to all of committee, that is correct. Um.
And then additionally, any surplus that is. Recorded in the audit or determined in the audit would automatically be allocated with this framework and again, would not require another motion of council in the spring. To deal with. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And then outside of those two circumstances. In the budget process, council is free to allocate reserves. As required in the budget process outside of this framework?
Through to all of committee, yes, your funding going. Into reserves through budget would still happen in the same way where we would identify. Through the budget workshops, how much money from specific departments they have requested to go into reserves.
So uh as a hypothetical, let's say a future council and a future budget process wanted to allocate. A large sum of money to Recreation Center Reserve. They could do that in the budget process, and even if, say, that. That reserve allocation was greater than any other reserve allocation. Uh so greater than seventeen percent in the community reserve set up here in that budget process. Uh this framework would not apply because we would be allocating those reserves through the budget process. And then in the spring, when there's potentially income from investments or surplus, that's when this framework would be applied?
Uh through to all of committee, that is correct. Uh the one anomaly I'll I'll say is. Investment income may come due throughout the month when we're reconciling the bank account. So this framework would then allow us to make that entry throughout the year. Right now, we capture it in a. What we call a clearing account until we can put it all in, um because we're wanting to bring the report to council to have the. Discussion on reserves, which has not happened very well in the last couple of years because of timing with. Reporting to municipal affairs by the first of May. So this would allow us to. Make the entry on investment income earned or generated every month and feed the reserves on a monthly basis. Rather than just holding the entry in a clearing account. Um it's not meant to be restrictive and these amounts may not be what this council lands on for funding. They simply were uh placed in based on using what we have. Currently set up on the uh reserve transactions, which I included a. Copy of on page thirty seven fifty four. This is the general ledger printout of all the reserves, so it was just uh. Kind of compiled and those percentages come in, but council could change those percentages at any time they want.
So i- if I may, just to clarify, the adoption of this framework would allow administration to. Routinely handle regular business that's happening right now on a. Near monthly basis, but is being delayed by the procedures and processes of council.
That's correct. It just allows us to clean up and move forward in a very consistent uh format.
Uh that's fantastic. I really like this framework. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Mayor, this and uh Council, we're good.
Yeah, and if I may, and the safety guard that's still in there is that through the. The process of stew doing regular business, and this is outlined right in the policy itself. Uh if down the road, an emergent item pops up, uh. There's nothing to stop council from saying, well, geez, you know what? This one reserve budget, it's a little bigger than we need right now, and we need to to shuffle some money over. You know, by way of council's regular processes and procedures, we can still shuffle. It's just it gives us a default setting to go through month by month.
Through to all of committee, that is correct.
Yeah, and for myself, it just makes sense. Um it's interesting, though, because, you know, I think we talked for years. Uh I'm trying to to talk about, well, what's the right number like? The the difference is we we talk for, what was the right number for a given pocket? Right? What should that number be? But I think actually the percentile is good. Because if we find ourselves in a given year where we're not able to deliver as much to reserves as we would like. At least we still have a framework for sort of divvying out the right percentages to the right areas without. Having to to spend a lot of time overthinking that situation, so I appreciate that. I'm good. Through the chair, thank you.
Thank you, Council. Good. Council Race and then Mayor, yes.
Thank you, sir. Quick question. What does emergent mean? Mean, what what would that problem be?
Uh through to all of committee, um. Twenty twenty three could have been a very emergent situation if we didn't have some um. Some balances within our bank account. We were housing uh additional population from Edson, additional people from Jasper. We were having to uh pay for services, purchase equipment, uh rent equipment. There was. Possibility if the tables were turned and if it was us evacuating to another committee or community. Um emergent could be that we need to still process payroll for our staff. Um like, it's very um. Very emergent, like.
Anybody would recognize.
There is something happening that we need access to these funds. Also, perhaps too, if we're uh maybe able to recoup the funds from the disaster recovery program, but we need to have access. To cover those expenses while we're waiting for the reimbursement to come in. That would also qualify as an emergent.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'm Mary Addison and then Council.
Thank you. Through the chair, uh actually Director Borbo. Thank you. Through the chair, uh, actually Director Borbo. Uh, in the report, it mentions some uh values with some reserve values, asset management forty million, eight hundred thousand. Uh, municipal reserve, uh, forty four million, seven hundred thousand from restricted operating reserves. Uh, and a risk mitigation reserve of of five, from five million. Uh, and given the report, we have twenty one million dollars worth of reserves currently. Uh, we know that our reserve numbers are low based on on where we should be, but with this uh, this report, this policy, uh, what would the implications be for council of including these numbers given our current reserve levels?
Uh, through to all of committee, when myself and CEO, CAO Panasic discussed this policy, we didn't see any pitfalls for identifying these numbers. We took it more as some guidelines of where we'd like to get to and perhaps help guide the percentages of how we're funding um through the framework over time.
Okay, and would uh, I assume if we were to move this forward through a a council process, a plan would come back or a planning process would come back to actually achieve these sort of reserve numbers?
Through to all of committee, that would be um definitely our desire to do that is to come up with a forecast of how we could potentially move towards this while also taking care of our current needs.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Counselor, good.
Just a quick question and then I'll probably seek uh consensus. Um, in the recommended uh action, it mentions the possibility of following amendments. Was there anything administration had identified at a high level or was it just in case it uh council had wanted to shift some of the framework percentiles right out of the gate?
Uh, through to all of committee, that is it exactly. This item has been on the council action pending list for a number of months and I just wanted to bring it forward respectfully, not being involved with all of the conversations prior to twenty twenty two. I thought there may have been something that uh I missed in looking at building this.
If if I may, Mr. Chair, I'll may, I'll take the recommended action uh to a degree. Uh, that committee reached consensus to request administration bring the reserve policy and framework report to a future committee, uh, to a future uh committee meeting. Actually, sorry, if I may, I'm actually going to redact that for a second. Um. And I'll go to a question. So if there are no um recommended amendments on council's part, uh, does administration feel like it's ready for prime time in the big room?
That's through to all of committee. Yes, I believe it is. It's been researched well and and I uh, I think we've come up with a framework that administration is going to be able to follow and.
Perfect. Uh, then I would take a slightly recommended action that committee reach consensus to request administration bring the reserve policy and framework report to a future regular uh council meeting.
Deliver to you.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you, Counselor. Committee, so we have a direction that committee reached consensus to bring the reserve policy and framework report to a regular meeting of council. Any comments or questions on the direction or consensus? Uh, first off, yeah, I I I'm happy, you know, uh, personally with this this policy. Uh, clearly states things. I really also, I think, even though the 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 numbers of forty million and five point five and four point seven, you know, um, but it gives us a target as well where we should be uh, when we're making decisions as well. So I really appreciate that being part of the 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 uh, the policy as well. Um, so yeah, I'll be speaking in favor of this. Thank you. Committee? Seeing no one else in queue, we'll then call the question that committee reached consensus to bring the reserve policy and framework report to a regular meeting of council. Please vote now. And that is carried unanimously. Counselor, race.
Thank you, sir. So I've been watching council or been involved with council for probably twelve, thirteen years right now. I personally have never seen any reserves sitting this high. I have, and as much as I hear, so many other municipalities are getting doubled in us. We have a, we have low debt. We don't owe a lot of money. We have almost twenty million dollars sitting in reserves. I know we want to get to forty, but I am so pleased with where we are. Uh, and I I think we we should, we should, you know, celebrate, maybe just for five seconds, our low debt, our twenty million dollars in reserve. Um, that's nothing to sneeze at. And Alicia, have you seen, you've been with this town a long time, have you seen that um reserves that high?
Through to Counselor Race, I I did put the balances on, I think it's on page thirty four. Uh, just to give council an indication of where the balances are sitting and and you are correct, we are sitting with uh but I I never lose sight of the fact that we have an awful lot of projects coming our way as well.
And you know what? I just got to say, Trevor, and I'll probably outline her. The work that was done on Switzer, Switzer and Rob, I'll tell you, you look at that road and it's like like somebody was here, they did the job to me in record time. Their recommendations are clean up everything, just for, so Trent, thank you so much.
I'll pass it to the good ones that did it.
Okay, thank you, Counselor. Mary Dixon?
Thank you. And I'd like to, uh, I'd like a consensus request here. I'd like to see consensus, the committee direct administration return a reserve forecast report to a future committee of the whole meeting. While they're typing that up, I'd like to speak to it at the moment. I would like to see a report come back from administration outlining how we can get to those reserve numbers over a period of time that we just uh passed to a regular council.
Excellent. Let me just give them the moment. Counselor.
Just a question for that. I think, I think I know the answer. Uh, sorry, Mr. Mayor, did you just say that you would like that uh, report to come prior to that uh, regular item coming to council?
I didn't give a timeline to the council, Magoon, and uh, I'm not uh, sure that I'm interested in in putting a timeline into it for administration. I'm not sure that that really matters in in my mind. Uh, it doesn't seem relevant to delay, say, the return of the reserve policy. But I think it is something that we have to deal with after, certainly after we've adopted this reserve policy.
Okay, thank you. Just, is there, you want to look at, I'm, Mary Dixon and ultimately that?
Yeah, to uh, have administration create a a report on reserve forecasts and return it to a future committee of the whole.
Yeah, now exactly. Thank you, Mayor, this thing. The committee, we currently have uh directed before the committee, seek consensus to administration create a report on reserve forecast and return to a future committee of the whole meeting. Um, if I can speak to it, I think this is a a great uh uh suggestion, um, or a direction. Um, I think it's even, you know, with with a lot of talk in the community right now with with public sites and and rec, you know, rec center. Um, you know, and other matters, I think this is good timing because that's also an important part of you know, our budget process is, you know, yes, we have twenty million dollars in reserves, but that twenty million dollars is is earmarked for a lot of projects and and we're, you know, unfortunate and and I I I want to have five seconds definitely of of yay, but we also have to figure out where we're going to get to that forty so we can continue those you know, projects, because those projects are going to build more and more as the time goes on. So I think, yeah, giving a a sense of the forecast and what that, how we're going to get there, I think is extremely important at this time. So I will be supporting this. Thank you. Committee, any other comments or questions on the direction? Okay, so seeing now, I'll just read one more time. The committee seek consensus to have administration create a report on reserve forecast and return it to a future committee of the whole being. And please vote now. And that is carried unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Committee, any other further discussion on five point two of reserve policy for your report? Seeing none, thank you, administration. Thank you, Ms. Borbo. Uh, we're going to move on to five point three, which is our uh fire smart funding release, which I'm assuming is going to mislead, so I'm just gonna write. Skip track to them.
Thank you very much. Um, I'm excited to bring this report to committee this evening to highlight um our efforts so far this year uh related to grants for fire smart work in our community, um, as well as discuss some uh, future works that could be undertaken with the hundred thousand dollars that council had set aside uh noted to be brought back pending results of our grant efforts. So as you know, we did receive some funding from FRIA for the South Fire Guard mulching that uh was completed in the spring. Um, we were also six, or we were not successful in a specific fire smart grant uh from FRIA. Uh, we did receive an insurance grant to conduct two hundred fire smart home inspection. Those those uh, they received the training for that just a couple of weekends ago. Um, so those will begin likely towards the end of summer into fall. Um, we did receive two hundred thousand dollars uh to assist in furthering our planning related to uh preparedness and mitigation around wildfire. And then we did not receive a a yet again, another direct fire smart grant um from Wauwunisa that we did apply on. Um. Therefore, we have highlighted the works that we had hoped to achieve with those fire smart grants in the next chart that you see below. Um, the major one on here that I wanted to kind of highlight for committee this evening is with respect to Willow, a a location off of Willow Road. We actually own the timber rights in that location. So tomorrow, we have an assessment on that site to determine um, the feasibility of getting the wood out and selling it. Um, and then that could offset um, any of the other expenditures to further more of these fire smart initiatives. So we'll know more on that as to whether or not with creek crossings and things like that, it's feasible to get the equipment in and get the wood out or whether we'll have to do a prescribed burn later in the fall, winter. Um, so ultimately, the options for this report are to release the funds and sort of allow us to go with the scope highlighted here up to the hundred thousand dollar mark. Or uh, if you so wish, you can go with option two and directly on which which ones you do want to go ahead with and which ones you may not.
Thank you, this one. Uh, Counselor Race.
Thank you, sir. So if the people have been trained, why are we waiting till the end of summer into the fall to have these two hundred homes fire smart?
Thank you for that question, Counselor Ray. So those that are trained are are volunteer firefighters as well as our wooey team. So as long as they are called away, we aren't able to uh schedule as many. So when we have um downtime, the portal is open. Now people can register, but we just sort of said that we would definitely get going in September, but it's weather dependent, whether our wooey teams here, availability of our fire volunteer firefighters.
And just one more quick question. I have, people say to me, the sprinkler that's on that they put on their roof, they were told, don't turn the water on because um, the town wants to utilize their water. And I'm going their water is our water. They'll be turning that tap on, you know, they'll come around and turn the top one. So can you clarify that? People who do have sprinklers, in any event, they do have to evacuate. What do they do?
Counselors, just to clarify, are you talking about the the home sprinklers, not like on your lawn?
The roof.
Yes. Um, so during our preparedness workshops that we put on early in, I think it was around April, we did discuss that and reminded those that attended that in the event that we must evacuate, ensure that your sprinkler is set up, but do not turn it on. Um, the fire crews will strategically come around and do that. Uh, the reason for that is we need to ensure we're maintaining pressure, um, but also a strategic approach to ensure our water reserves stay adequate. Um, but of course, in the event that we do have to evacuate, all of those communications will be reiterated to up to the public, but an excellent moment to capitalize on sharing that. Thank you.
Uh, no, I've had, I've had people say to me, they were told to register that they have sprinklers set. Is that true?
Not in our community.
It's not true in our community?
We don't, we don't do that in our community. Yeah. In others, they may, but we don't.
Thank you.
If we may, uh, the the building community, a lot of those things, the firefighters may not know where, but they know what to look for. Um, and if a neighborhood is in, in uh in the line of fire, uh, they will go in those neighborhoods and they know what to look for, that there is a sprinkler system and they just turn it on. Uh, so they don't need a registration of those uh, that they've said in the past.
Yeah.
Um, I myself, I guess the question is, with these estimated costs, um, you know, um, and it's looking into the fall of quarter three, quarter four, but are those all in-house uh that would be used or are these are fees that would be going out?
Thank you for that question, Counselor Ha. So uh, once we understand the total value that we may or may not get from the Willow location, that will help us uh narrow or better define scopes for the other pro- uh projects. Um, we base these costs solely off of similar projects that we've had over the the last little while. Um, so if it crests the the procurement policy for uh, which only maybe one of these does, um, all others would be done either internally with our staff or with a contractor following with appropriate quotes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, good. Mary Dixon?
Thank you. I'd like to take the recommended action that committee direct administration to return the fire smart funding release report to a future regard council meeting for decision. And I'll speak to it for a moment. I think that this list of potential projects that administration's put together uh is a great list of potential projects. I'd love to see you know, all five of these uh completed in the community, if that's at all possible with the funding and and the clearing of Willow Road. But not just for each of these locations. I I really want to thank administration for bringing them forward because it's not just a fighter smart issue that we're solving by going in and and doing this work. We're taking away hazard trees from areas where people recreate, they're camping. Uh, we're clearing out areas where people are are making illegal encampments that are causing problems and increasing our fire risk within the community. Uh, so I'm I'm very grateful for this list and I'm glad that we have the opportunity to move forward on some of these projects and love to see it happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Dixon. So committee, we have a direction, the committee direct administration, return the fire smart funding release report to a future regular council meeting for a decision. Uh, may, any comments, questions on the direction? I myself, I'll be in favor of this. Um, you know, looking at the locations, yeah, they 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 are areas that haven't done before, but very long time ago. Um, and they haven't uh been, you know, any mitigation in those areas for quite some time. So, you know, I appreciate that and and that's what, you know, those hundred thousand dollars that we allocated uh for or to protect our community. So uh, I'll be in favor of this. Thank you. Committee? And we will call the question, the committee direct administration, return the fire smart funding release report to a future regular council meeting for decision. Please vote now. And that is carried unanimously. Thank you, everybody. Any other questions or discussion on five point three? See, I'm all right. Then we will move on to our correspondence. We have six point one letter from Deputy Premier and Minister of Public Safety and Emergency Services and a letter from Alberta Health Services, a virtual emergency physician update. So uh, anyone look to make a direction or any questions on the correspondence?
Here, this is. I'd like to seek consensus, the committee accept the correspondence package for information.
Okay, you, Mary, this is. We have a direction that we really accept correspondence for information. Any comments or questions on the direction? Seeing none, we'll call the question. Please vote now. And that is carried unanimously. Thank you very much. We'll move on to reporting. So council reports, let's start with uh Counselor Chambers, you are, start with you there.
Thank you. Um, I was at, since our last meeting, it's been a while, but I was at Historical Society meeting. We did get a very robust update already from um Margaret today, but definitely good to see. But definitely good to see that they were successful in that second grant for the summer student. Um and obviously some of the the summer programming ongoing, so that's all I have to report.
Thank you, Counselor Chambers. Uh, Council race.
Nothing to report.
Okay, Councilor Do?
Uh just uh in a follow up to my email, I will be out on vacation for the next little while into August, so I hope everybody has an enjoyable summer. While we're uh we're out enjoying some sunshine.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mayor Nissen?
I have nothing to report.
Okay, I have myself, and I know this is a little bit delayed, but we've had some uh meetings canceled. Uh I just wanna thank everybody. Um I myself and um uh Tyler Wa from the chamber and um. The West Taylor had few community futures, uh attended the lemonade day in town, uh and was able to. Take part in tasting lemonade and judging it. It was a lot of fun. Um there wasn't as many stands as there was in past years, but. They find that some of them age out or they lose interest, so we've got now a younger crowd. Uh they're getting into it, so it was a lot of fun and did an excellent job of that. Um also want to mention, uh so recently we had a rodeo in town, it was very well attended. Um there was despite the weather, because there was a massive storm during it, but uh it was a lot of fun. And I gotta say, those rodeo grounds had never looked better out there. They have put a lot of work into it. Apparently, I was talking to one of the the ex-society uh uh members. They put in, I believe, twenty five thousand dollars into uh refurbishing and getting the the uh. Rodeo area back to where you couldn't even tell there was uh moisture in there, it was real light. And that's what I think they showed up expecting to be a lot of, you know, listen, so it was really good. Um and then I also attended the Canada Day, uh gotta say, the uh uh girl show, uh you know, in a. It was more interactive than I would say last year. There was a lot more different um um symbols, different uh, you know, um. Pictures that were up there, and I had two really enthusiastic children behind me that were loving it. And thankfully, there there was a couple of them that I wasn't sure at first until they told us what it was or everyone around them, so uh no, it was really good. Uh the parade was uh uh I I thought well attended and uh very well done. They were some really nice folks up there. Mayor was in the one of the carts from the Pine Valley Lodge, so that was good. Um and I heard great things about, and I saw on Facebook the the events that day too. All great talents and a lot of people attended, so I think that was a really important day for our community, so. Um other than that, that's all for me. So moving on then to uh our chief administrative officer. Uh Mr. Lockman.
So our June highlights are included in the package, and if you have any questions, I hope I have the answer in the room.
Okay. Uh, committee, is there any questions for the operating highlights, Mayor Nissen?
Uh, thank you. I'm through the chair to administration. Uh we have a public hearing coming up next, or several public hearings coming up next week. Uh and we've been getting submissions and some of the submissions have been coming uh with council either fully or partially CC. Uh and I've noticed that some of the residents have been uh making submissions to various email addresses such as infrastructure at Hindenazie, development at Hindenazie. As well as a couple of individuals from development services. Uh I'm curious from uh council standpoint. What administration is doing to handle these submissions, if there's any uh coaching or support of residents to make sure that they're submitting for the the correct. Uh public hearing, given that there there are five and there's some resident confusion about that. And are residents who are making submissions uh being uh? Given feedback that their submissions have been properly submitted and will be included in the public here?
Uh, thank you for the question. Um, yeah, there is a large volume, so I I have to speak in generality and it might not answer everything. Um, you know, our development department is doing their best to reply to people. Um if they're receiving something, then it talks about multiple properties, they're copying it and making sure it's it's in the fall of the packages. Um we're preparing for uh more people on the given day, we're gonna try and set up. Uh speaker in the lobby so that uh people can hear what's going on. If we if we run out of room. Uh they're they're gonna do a little pre-meeting to uh make sure that the registration process uh works well for. People registering to uh to come in, I mean to speak. We we are asking people to register in advance. Uh but if someone shows up, uh you know, they they will be uh provided the opportunity to sign up when they do. Then you get here.
Excellent. Thank you very much for that update. Uh I just wanted to make sure the council is comfortable that uh our residents are getting feedback, that their responses are being received. Thank you.
Thank you. Um I had a a quick question about uh the rest will be, pardon Mr. Lockman, but. Uh mentioning of multiple break-ins at ISB and Park Satellite and the patients, so. Um what are we experiencing in those areas? Like, are these break-ins and then thefts, or are they break-ins and then vandalism? What is what is happening in those areas?
So we we have had two lately, and so are our neighbors in that area. Um they have uh cut the fence and they come in and they are uh stealing stuff out of the pickups. Um.
Check that. So I I imagine obviously the there's some P have been, you know, flag on this.
Oh, we we have reported and cataloged what we've lost and working through insurance and uh and all of those good things. We are also trying to. Uh i- in in the budget, you add security upgrades for that building, so we're trying to get that package out the door so we can. Uh move move that forward as well.
Because we also, if I recall, uh recently a change to the bathrooms and also at the spray park because of of break-ins and and things and vandalism, is that correct?
Um a lot of detail on that.
Uh thank you for the question. There had been, pardon me, um uh they weren't break-ins, it's the later that the the spray card washrooms were open. Um the less there's, you know, families and things around, so more but more opportunity as opposed to going and do that. Um and then we did have a break-in to one of our um park satellite locations and we did lose some some tools through that, we were able to get some back, but.
Okay, okay. But uh, yeah, it's still the immediate dog down there, it's deterred, but anyway. Uh, okay, Mayor Nissen?
Uh, thank you, and through the chair to administration, uh last month, the council approved a motion supporting the River Valley Agricultural Society. Putting some fencing into Mary Ramo Park. It is my understanding that the River Valley Agricultural Society has run into some issues. Uh with Yellowhead County that may be on the municipality hinted to fix. Is that issue? Moving ahead currently?
Uh, thank you for that question. I just sent you an update here and there on that.
Okay.
Um. The challenge is the content of the agreement between the two municipalities at this point. Um I just sent CAO a note, and I believe we're gonna discuss that tomorrow um to see how we can best move this forward.
Thank you. If I may, on that note, are we then go some way to get an update? Because my understanding, does they agree to it? We agree to it and it was, you know, green light, so are we gonna get an update on that or is counseling to be involved in trying to advocate or?
I think pending the discussions tomorrow, we'll we'll determine how we take our next steps, but I am aware of the the timeliness associated with the grant for the River Valley. Agriculture Association. Um so, yeah, I'll talk about this week.
Okay, thank you. All right, uh, committee, Mayor Nissen, yeah, please.
Thank you. I'm through the chair to administration. Uh do we have any currently deployed fire assets anywhere?
Couldn't say a hundred percent. All of our movies are here. I I don't think we have anyone out right now. They just returned a little while ago.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Committee, any other questions for our operating highlights? Okay, seeing none, we do have uh three items in the closed session, so I'm looking for motion. Mayor Nissen?
Move that we move into closed at five fifty five PM.
Great.
Maybe after your break.
Yeah.
A little bit more information.
Hey, we'll just wait for that to come up on our screen and uh. Yeah, so the committee move into closed session at five fifty five PM. Call the question, please vote now. And with that motion, we will take a ten minute break and reconvene in a brief session. Thank you, everybody.